Can you pull down that?
Great. All right, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to call the meeting of the village board to order at 7:31. In terms of roll call, we have trustees Lynn, Stokebrand, Mor Baldoff and Ursink is jo- well, in the room, and trustee Ursink is joining us remotely. Trustees Kudo and Arndorfer are excused, and President McCaig is here. I'd like to, has this meeting been publicly noticed?
Yes, in accordance with law.
Great. Well, I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you in advance for your time, talent, and patience as we conduct the business of the people this evening. I'd like to call attention to the pride flag as it is still Pride Month. I apologize that I forgot to have it visible last, last meeting, and hopefully next year we'll organize and have it on the flagpole with Juneteenth as well. We, I would like to, the Juneteenth proclamation under the Village Presidents' Report at the end of the meeting, I would like that to bring that up to the top of the order as we have a special guest who has agreed to read it for us. Are there any objections to that? All right, seeing none, I would like to invite school board member Abigail Fowler up to the microphone in the podium. And she has agreed, you couldn't, I don't, does she need to say her address?
No, it's not public comment.
Most people know where I live. Forty-six hundred North Morris Boulevard. I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you so much, and what an honor to be able to read this into record. Thank you, Ann. Whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth who we are declared equal, not only in freedom, but also in justice, both of which are essential for healthy civilization. And whereas our nation was conceived on July 4th, 1776, with the Declaration of Independence, the classic statement being, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain undeniable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And whereas, at 2:00 PM on New Year's Day, January 1st, 1863, using his war powers as president, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that "all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then, thenceforward, and forever free." And whereas, more than two years would pass before the news reached African Americans living in Texas, when on June 19th, 1865, Union Major General Gordon Granger and his regiment arrived in Galveston and spread the word that slavery had been abolished. And whereas, the following year, the first official Juneteenth celebration took place in Texas and have continued across the United States throughout the years. And whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery. And whereas, Juneteenth is an important opportunity to honor the principles of the Declaration of Independence and celebrate the achievements and contributions African Americans have made and continue to make in Wisconsin and across our nation. Ann?
Now therefore be it resolved that I, Ann McCaig, President of the Village of Shorewood, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing June 19th, 2023, as Juneteenth Day.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next year, I can assure you, we will not be meeting on June 19th, and hopefully we'll have it as a holiday. Okay, thank you very much. So moving on to item number four, Special Order of Business, Consider the Bid Award Change Order Number One and Budget for First Floor Village Hall Updates. Village Manager Ewald.
I'm going to introduce Connor Fisher, who you have seen before, come before you regarding the design on the first floor. And he's here and going to walk us through the materials this evening.
Hi, everyone. This is Connor Fisher from Fisher Fisher Tice Architects. When we last met on January 17th, we presented a concept plan for the first floor of the Shorewood Village Hall. That's the clerk customer needs, front desk, and court clerk area. We did a walkthrough tour of the space and presented what our kind of big concept was and showed you room by room what we were thinking. We're looking at doing a series of small architectural interventions that are going to make big improvements to the space, the function, and the kind of intuitive nature of the hall for the staff and the village. Updates since January, we finalized the design with the village and we produced the documentation, the drawings, and the specifications for the project. We went out, we advertised for bid publicly. We went out to bid. We put our drawings publicly for contractors to look at them. And then we received bids and had a bid opening. We received one bid from Dufek Construction from Waukesha, Wisconsin. In the past few weeks now, I've been working with the village and with the contractor through some of the fine points of details of what the contract would look like. And at this point, through the, the letter we wrote, kind of spelling out the really specifics of what's included in the project and what the, the bid numbers were, we're here to present this project to award the construction contract for construction to Dufek Construction.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes.
They're from Waukesha, Wisconsin. Oh, really? Okay.
Small, small time. All right. If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion. Trustee Stokebrand?
I just had a couple of questions. I just, there was a couple of different numbers for the door. We're adding this rolling counter shutter. Was this like an addition, a change order, so it wasn't requested at the beginning?
Sure. The short answer, it was, it was an honest mistake by the bidder. They missed it. And so, and kind of-
It was in the spec.
It was in the spec. In the past weeks, we've talked about what that means. We understand it's a hard public bid. But, but we are recommending kind of letting them add that to the project and not hold them to owing that to us with, with no payment for it.
Okay, then there's a digit that's different, but I'm sure it's inconsequential. So I just, in looking at this, is this the last time this will come before us for approval before construction starts?
As my understanding, yes.
And so I just, to review, is this going to be a long-term fix? I think we last remodeled the first floor less than 10 years ago. And so, we see this, not that anyone can see into the crystal ball, but I don't think the taxpayers would be interested in remodeling a space again less than 10 years out from a previous remodel.
Yes, I believe that it's going to be a long-term fix.
And I noticed when we did the walkthrough last fall, there was talk about whether or not they would be able to open up an original window, and I'm just thinking that would be a big difference in expense to bring some daylight into the space on the east side. And so this accommodates that. Is that my understanding, we're going to be able to do that?
Yes.
That's exciting.
We found three kind of old abandoned window openings that are hiding in the drywall that we're going to open up.
Awesome. And so that's included in this cost?
Yes.
And any chance we could reuse that stone that we paid for?
Um-
The granite counter?
Um, no. The, the configuration of the new desk is a different size and shape.
Unfortunate. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll make a motion if we're ready. I move to award the base bid for construction and approval of change order number one to Dufek Construction in the amount of $137,480 and project budget of $177,480.
Second.
And any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excited for this. All right, as we approach, the next item is number five, Consent Agendas. As we approach the consent agenda, five F, is there anyone here that would like to speak on the matter of five F? It's denial of applications for special privilege approvals for basketball hoops?
I was going to ask to pull it, so.
I was going to pull it as well.
Okay, let's just-
I was going to pull it as well.
Okay, we're pulling it. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of five F? Yes.
I would like to pull item B as in Betty.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of five B and five F?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Mor Baldoff, seconded by trustee Ursink. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item six, which is items removed from the consent agenda, we will take five B, consider regular village board meeting minutes, June 5th, 2023. Trustee Stokebrand?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, in terms of attendance, I think early in the minutes, it, President McCaig was joining remotely, but I don't think you joined until later in the meeting. And I think because of the importance of counts on some votes, going forward, we're kind of in a new hybrid now because we're meeting not all online, not all in person, but both. And so, first of all, I think it should be noted that when you joined, because I don't believe it was until item six. And so there were items that you didn't vote on, although it does talk about a unanimous vote. I tried to go back through the minutes today. I do not believe that you voted on item four B. And so I just, I think it's important, so that, that vote would change. It wouldn't change, it would only change the number. It would be five to nothing. But I just think going forward, when we have people on the board who are remote, it needs to be noted, like they, like if they were in person, if someone arrives late, it's noted they arrive late. And obviously, the vote count can be important. I got an opinion from attorney Behr today. Sometimes you need a majority. And so I just think going forward, it's important for the clerk staff to make sure that we note when people arrive and when they leave, whether it's in person or virtually. So it's a, I guess I would ask that the minutes be amended to insert President Keg appeared remotely, and then at what point in the minutes it was, I believe it was, as I said before, item six. And then that vote on, or B, I would also move that that be changed to five to-
Did you find those two?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's my motion. Do you want me to try that again, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Does anybody want trustee Stokebrand to repeat that? All right, make a motion?
That was my motion.
So is there a second? Fair? Could I abstain?
I'll second that. I think it's reasonable to.
Seconded by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Mor Baldoff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You threw me off there. And then, any abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to five F, consider denial of applications for special privilege approvals for basketball hoops encroaching into the alleys at 4330 North Alpine Ave, 4350 North Wildwood Avenue, and 4455 North Ardmore Avenue, and 4357 North Alpine Avenue. So this item is coming to us, I guess technically from the planning department, because that's who has jurisdiction over special privilege approvals, bringing those to the board. It came, there's a memo in our packet giving the history of this item, along with pictures and opinion from staff. Is there anyone who would like me to walk through those materials? Okay, Director Guitmanchog, yes?
I guess I would just have one quick question. So these, the time, looking for a timeframe for context, like how long have some of them been in place?
Two of the four, three of the four. I would defer to them. We don't-
Okay.
I don't have information on that, if you want to answer those questions.
You have to come up and say your name and address.
Sorry, yeah, you got to say it.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Matt Schmidt at 4350 North Wildwood. Ours has been in place for the last four or five years.
Thank you.
And Margaret Dorsey at 4357 North Alpine. And we did just replace ours because it broke. So it was in place, and about a year, like last summer, we replaced it. But previously to that, there was one there when we moved in in 2012. So we just replaced it in the exact same spot.
Dane Casper, 4330 North Alpine. Ours has been in place for over one year, less than a year and a half.
Thank you. Director Guitmanchog, is there anything that you want to add or call our attention to?
No, I think the history and staff's perspective is shared in the memo. DPW and the attorney also provided comment within that review. So we're just here to process what a special privilege application is. We're not trying to, you know, limit fun in the village or things like that. So we're just giving the perspective of what it means to the village to have that kind of encroachment over a very tight right-of-way. But it is the applicant's right to apply for a special privilege to, to receive that and to remove the enforcement. But it is our perspective, just through the typical code enforcement process, that we would request that they be removed to limit the potential damage in the future. And we do believe that they could be accommodated within that same space if they were to simply redesign, which obviously would, you know, have costs to the applicant. But we think as a long-term solution, that is, is more practical. We would be hesitant to set the precedent that these would be allowed everywhere or anywhere, I suppose, upon application, particularly just with respect to having to maintain insurance and/or bond requirements with them annually. That does become burdensome for both staff and the homeowner to do that. So we would hope that new applicants would be able to abide by the right-of-way line. We acknowledge these have been in place, and so we're here to hear your perspective about when, if ever, they should be enforced or approved under what conditions.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Baldor? Baldoff?
I was just going to say, I, I do not support asking families to take these down. It sounds like, I understand the concern, but, you know, they've already gone through, you know, they're already paying a cost to come here to apply for the special approval, coming here to talk to us about this. And, you know, the track record, to me, that sounds actually, you know, pretty good, that there really haven't been very many issues. I understand that there have been some issues, but the fact that we've got families who are, you know, willing to have, you know, insurance as needed. I, I don't support asking people to relocate these. I think we want to do anything we can to have, you know, kids have a, you know, a safe, safe places to play and be out and about. So I am going to be voting to approve these applications for special privilege approvals and let folks keep their hoops.
I would just add, you know, I was contacted by the owners of 4330 North Alpine who are present, and they indicated that they actually called the village because they were sure what the rule was. And at the time, you know, they were told where they could put it was okay. And, you know, whether it was a misunderstanding or whatever it is, I mean, I think just the fact that they were told that they were okay and that it's been okay for over a year, you know, I, I would not want to deny that one at a minimum. But I also agree, you know, looking at these other ones, looking at how long they've been in place in particular, and just seeing some of the pictures of where they are. I mean, I think the, the, I think going forward, we do need to be more clear, you know, that of exactly where the hoop needs to be for future hoops. But for these existing ones that have made this special request, I think I'm okay with, with letting them keep their hoops where they are, so.
Yes. So just to be clear, if you get the special privilege approval, it's for these four basketball hoops, right?
Whoever's listed here.
Right, that's what, we have four applications on file, so it is specific to these addresses at the moment.
And so, part of the requirement is getting insurance?
Correct. They are all required to provide insurance. Yes, as with any special privilege, it's typically in your packet, including parklets, things like that as well.
And so, there was an incident with a garbage truck, right?
Correct.
And what happened? Who paid for what?
I don't believe we submitted a claim. Is that correct? Looking to-
Was, so was it just the, was it-
To my knowledge, the no claim was submitted.
The truck was damaged, the hoop was damaged, or what was damaged?
I believe that was our old hoop, and the garbage truck hit it and broke the backboard. And so the gentleman came and knocked on the door and told us about it, and then we just paid for it to be removed. And then put a new one.
A whole new, so can you, can't you get one of these where it folds up? But the backboard broke, so it's not just a question of the hoop sticking out. It can be the backboard too. It's, technology can't help us here by saying, you can have it, but you've got to have it so the hoop folds up.
Yeah, and ours does fold, but I guess it doesn't, it doesn't go all the way. Like, it couldn't go straight up, like.
Well, the whole thing goes up and down, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So could we assume that there are more of these in the village? And if people find out, residents find out that four people got a special privilege approval, what do we, what do we do?
I don't believe there are more. I do believe my inspector went through the, through all the alleys at the time to make sure that he was being consistent with the enforcement of this. So I believe he only found four that he thought were encroaching. And so that is what is before extended, is the applications with respect to those four enforcements. If there were more, either they chose to remove them or he didn't see them. But I, I think that these are the only four that we are aware of. And once again, it would be if, if someone were want, were either to want to put one up or was found to have one, they would need to have a special privilege on file to maintain that. So moving forward, if someone requests it, we would bring the same kind of request to the village, and hopefully we could review it before it's installed would be ideal. And then you could have more of a fair, you know, conversation about it. I do completely sympathize that these are already up there, and they, in one case, at least they were, appeared to have been told that the village was okay with it. So I would hope that moving forward, we would be more clear on our part and bring it to you before, before the enforcement necessary.
But so what would you say to someone who says, I want to put one up and it's going to be over in the public right-of-way? Now, if we approve these, what do you say to them? Or you have to apply for a special privilege permit?
Correct.
And the precedent is that they're approved?
While the precedent-
Depends on what happens, right?
Well, in general, with special app, privilege app approvals, we deny almost all of them. I mean, that everyone I've gotten, since I've been here, we've denied, and, you know.
Approved.
Or we, we, we've denied, I mean, as people have asked for, for, you know, plants on the wrong side of the fence, I mean, things like that, you know, so.
I should say, the board typically approves probably the vast majority of them, but there have been certain things that the board has been pretty firm on denying, including arbor vida in the, in a vision line, things of that nature.
Oh, apologies. I thought you were-
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We haven't forced, we haven't forced the removal of certain things that the board has deemed unsafe or, or things of that nature.
We did ask people had to remove a row of arbor vida that were going to grow into the sidewalk.
That one's-
And I would also suggest too, that the precedent here, that we would be setting if the, you know, if we decide to allow these, is that we're allowing ones that have been there for a while, largely without incident, to remain. I think it would become a different conversation if it's all of a sudden, you know, hundreds of people are like, cool, we're going to do the same thing. You know, maybe that's a different conversation, but to me, these have been here some, you know, one for, you know, it sounds like, you know, almost a decade essentially, without issues. So I, I think that we should let these stay. And then if there are issues in the future, like Bart said, hopefully we can make sure that they're installed to prevent this in the future for anyone who is thinking about putting one in and kind of deal with that problem there and hope that, you know, we're, we're preventing anybody from putting one in where it shouldn't be.
And like I said, I can confirm, but I do believe my inspector went through all the alleys. So if, if he finds another one in three years, we'll know that it was installed after this. And so hopefully, once again, we can have a more clear, consistent message that they need to be behind your property line and/or approved by a special privilege. And then I do believe that you'd have a better conversation because it would be something that, you know, you, you don't want to set the precedent for necessarily without that conversation or discussion.
Trustee Ursink has been waiting.
No, go ahead.
Do you have something to finish?
I, I guess I, I don't, I, you know, I, at this point, I think everything, you know, I, I agree with sentiment of trustee Baldoff and trustee Lynn. You know, I'm, I'm in favor of approving this for this evening, and I do sympathize a little bit with DPW and their equipment. We, you know, the village does make a very large investment in our, in our vehicles. But, but at the same time, I also encourage and appreciate, you know, when families are living and have an alley and they don't have a separate driveway with a basket, with a, with a garage where they can put up a basketball hoop, you know, I, I feel for them. And I, and I think this is, you know, this is, this is a fantastic option for them to be able to play in, in the alley. So I would be in favor of approving these for this evening as well.
Trustee Lynn?
Sarge, my last point, I just think, you know, sometimes it takes something like this coming up to clarify what the rule really is. You know, because obviously for some time, there's been some level of confusion about what the rule is, you know. And even if the rule was technically written, you know, the same way this whole time, I think just this way, now everybody knows in the village, in the community, this is what the rule is. And so I think going forward, you know, I'm okay with these hoops. And then going forward, you know, we'll just case by case. Thank you.
Yes.
As the liability guy, I just have to speak up here. First of all, no one loves a good game.
Speak a little louder, Nathan.
As the liability guy, I just have to throw in a couple of comments here. No one loves a good game of driveway basketball as much as I did when I was a kid. Everybody loves it. It's a wonderful thing. It's a great thing. But, but the point, I just think we're getting away from the, the point of keeping the right-of-way clear in the alleys is for the equipment that has to go through there, municipal equipment that has to go through there. I, I can lean on Lee Ann as to how much the damage was to the municipal vehicle when that incident, incident occurred. But I don't know the exact number. But if you do this, they're going to get hit at some point, and just hope to God it doesn't tip over and then catch a, a line, a power cable or a line or something else, and then somebody gets electrocuted or something else happens. But eventually, one of these things is going to get hit if you set the precedent that you can put stuff in the right-of-way through the alley. And that's, you know, and, and the fact that there's a track record of, of that not happening. Equipment gets bigger, as time goes by, there's different equipment that's used. You know, the, the alleys get redone, and there's construction work that's done in the area. And there's different types of equipment that goes through there, depending if there's construction or there's snow removal or there's whatever, whatever the case may be, garbage collection, whatever it might be. And, you know, it, it's just that, that's, that's the reason for it. It's not because nobody doesn't love a good game of basketball in the backyard or in the alley. But, you know, so eventually, that probably- But, you know, so eventually that probably just be prepared because that's probably going to happen and it very well. Hopefully the only thing that happens is, is that there is property damage to some municipal equipment and that's the end of it. If you set that precedent, you set that precedent.
Could you explain the bonding process? Because it sounds like there's not only you have to have the insurance, but then you have to pay a bond in case for the deductible? So is that like a retainer, like you have it on file?
Well, that's discretionary. In my opinion, that's discretionary. You can do that, you can order that. You know, that, that essentially there, there be insurance that names the municipality as an additional insured if there's some issue or property damage or personal injury that results from one of these things getting hit or whatever the case might be. You know, and then again, I, I think the request came, correct me if I'm wrong, I think staff had asked that there'd be an amount, I, I think Leanne had mentioned in one of the emails, I can't remember what our deductible is. You know?
Is it ten thousand or something? No. To be accurate, I said, I don't know what our deductible is, but, but I thought that that would be an appropriate amount.
Okay. I thought that was the deductible. I, I misspoke, but do you know what the damage was to the?
I don't recall. I believe in that particular instance, there probably was more damage to the hoop than there was to our truck.
Got it.
I think if, since I'm standing here, I'm, I'm just going to offer from a DPW perspective, again, not trying to outlaw fun. But in the, the way that we look at that is, that is the village's airspace and area of operation. I don't believe this body or staff would ever recommend allowing a sign or another part of a building to encroach over Oakland Avenue for various reasons. When you boil it down, this really is no different.
Thank you. Trustee Ursink, you still have your hand up? Is there something else you wanted to add or?
No, I just forgot to lower it. Sorry about that.
Okay. Well, I haven't, I am really torn because I like to be fun, although I seldom vote for Halloween trick or treating. I'm really a bummer on that, but and I did live on an alley and my kids played in that alley. We didn't have a hoop like that, but it was like, yeah, we had, it was it, we had to like move it in and out. So I'm going to say this is it's not a great idea to allow these for that, you know, it is a public right of way. It is a great place to play, but it also is a place where traffic, and so in my mind, it would be kind of like we, if we allowed a special privilege for a hoop that went like into the parking lane over a street where we're kind of encouraging people to play in an area that's, you know, designated for vehicles and, and that said, my kids also played in the street, so, you know. On the other hand, I can understand that you have these things and you can't imagine life going on with a different arrangement, like, you know, you don't want to change. It's expensive to change, et cetera. I guess if we allow these, then you know, you're all willing to have the insurance and the bond or whatever else is required. Moving forward, if somebody didn't feel that that, they could meet that bar, then they could install a hoop or get one on a, that you roll in and out, you know, and so then they wouldn't have to have that or pay the fee. It does seem like a lot to go through every year on, you know, because it's not just once. So it sounds like a great idea now, but I could also understand that every year, I mean, it is administrative. So I'm kind of torn. But I'm gonna I think I'm leaning towards I'm not uncomfortable, I'm not comfortable with things in the right of way. The sidewalk is one thing, but like where vehicles go is, is another that to me. And I know it's not a lot in it, but it seems like, I also lived on an alley where there was a lot of interest in doing a lot of things in the alley that were against village code. And everybody was always upset that they couldn't do them, and it was always a lot of fun. So they were done unofficially. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna close now, but I just wanted to say in, in all my 20 years and my three kids being in their twenties now, I feel for, for both sides. I'm going to come down on my elected official side of just the safer, more prudent way to go at this time. And maybe we can have a fund to replace your hoops if, who knows what is, if, whether it's going to pass or not. All right, with that, yes.
Just one last wrap up with everything, you know, I just think there's, there's a great case for keeping the right of way cleared. I just think there was too much confusion in the community about what could happen with these hoops in the past. And I just think yes, we have to stick to this going forward, but I just think at the moment, it's been made very clear that if a garbage truck hits your hoop, it's probably going to rip your hoop out. And, you know, I think everybody gets that, and so I'm okay with just keeping them where they are now and just, you know, enforcing this more clearly going forward. Thanks.
Seems okay. All right.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
I move to approve the applications for special privilege approvals for basketball hoops encroaching into the alleys at forty three thirty North Alpine Avenue, forty three fifty North Wildwood Avenue, forty four fifty five North Ardmore Avenue and forty three fifty seven North Alpine Avenue, subject to all applicants maintaining the required insurance documentation and filing a bond with the village in the amount equal to the village's property vehicle damage deductible not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Second.
Third, fourth. Motion by trustee Moore Baldoff, seconded by trustee Lynn. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, let's do a roll call vote since we have somebody remote. Trustee Moore Baldoff, yes. Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
President McCag?
Aye.
You won. All right, thank you very much for everyone's time, talent and patience on that. All right, item eight, item seven, public hearings. There are none this evening. Item eight, citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda. Are there any citizens who would like to be heard this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we move on to item nine, new business. Nine A can, oh, nine A has been deferred to August seventh. Nine B, consider resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, authorizing director of public works to act on behalf of the village of Shorewood relating to the purchase and approval of temporary limited easements for the twenty twenty-five WISDOT reconstruction of North Lake Drive. This is in our packet. It is fairly straightforward. Are there any questions at this time? Trustee Stokbrand?
Yeah, I don't know. I think this is a little outdated. At one point, this was a twenty twenty-six project, but now it's twenty twenty-five. Regrettably, the state moved it up. So in the resolution, we just want to make sure it changed. Am I not mis-
Oh, there is a typo, right. And I think there was a slight typo in the, there was a missed date in the memo, but it was not consequential. Okay, so there is, it does say twenty twenty-six Lake Drive.
But you want a motion to amend it?
Yeah, let's do that.
I'm yes. I move to amend resolution twenty twenty-three fourteen, changing twenty twenty-six into references to twenty twenty-five.
You can move to pass.
Move to, and I'll make a motion to pass with the amended amendments. Amendment.
Second that. All right, motion by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote? Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff? Yes. President McCag?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to nine C, consider designation of ARPA funding for Oakland Capital LED streetlight fixtures. This is also memo in our packet. We've had a lot of discussion and updates over the use of ARPA funding. And so are there any questions regarding this? Trustee Stokbrand?
Yeah, I just have had a, a resident who's very interested in light fixtures asking about what could be done to make the fixtures on Oakland and Capitol so that the light doesn't go up at all, so all the light just comes down, and I, my understanding is this doesn't address that at all. That this is just about changing, for my lack of understanding, a bulb?
That's correct.
Okay.
It may be, so the, the, the type of fixture that we have was actually designed with the cutout so that light also goes up.
The purpose of that was aesthetics?
I, I don't, can't speak to that, don't know. We can certainly look at whether the fixtures can be retrofitted with shields. But absent that, the only remedy is complete replacement of the fixtures. Which is significantly more money than replacing the bulbs.
I guess I for one would be interested in seeing if we could get a shade for those environmental reasons. I was thrilled to see that we have this two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from GI funding. And I think for the the community that we live in, to be able to have the light only go down and not up would be meaningful to many residents, and I would at least want to know what it would cost. So I could put that into my decision making.
Since we don't have that information tonight, is, are you wanting to defer?
I would.
Okay, would you like to, is there any time sensitivity?
Well, we estimate about four months to complete the project, so, and we have ramp up time with purchasing the, the bulbs. So I'll defer to you on what you think that would be.
I, I, I I'm not in a position to answer that question right now. I guess I'm just trying to understand though, from trustee Stokbrand's point. If the fixtures cannot be shielded or it's deemed that the shields are more expensive than perhaps we're comfortable with, what is your alternative?
You know, until I get a number, I don't know. Because I need to know how much it would cost. Fifteen thousand for LED fix. How much for a shield that sends only the light?
For the lights?
The bulbs.
Fifteen for the, not the fixtures. We're not replacing fixtures.
Oh, it, it says light fixtures.
It does say fixtures in the motion, but we
My apologies.
We could change that when we give the motion to bulbs.
So what should it say? Instead of light fixtures?
We're relamping, so what you see when you're standing on the street will not change. It's the, the guts, we'll say. The interior components of that decorative piece that you're seeing is what we are changing. We're, we're converting that to LED for energy savings.
So it's a little bit, it's a little bit more than just a bulb? It's some electrical hook up in there?
It's the, the lamp inside, the lamp and the bulb, but that change does not change what you see.
Right, right.
So I guess not doing this simply defers the energy savings. Unless you believe we're, you might prefer to change the entire fixture, which is as I mentioned, significantly more expensive than changing.
I guess I just need, I can't make a decision until I have numbers.
Trustee Ursink?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I, I just wanted to speak to, you know, the idea of shading. I mean, we've talked about this, like the dark sky initiative for a long time now. In conservation committee meetings, it's also been brought up and I've asked that group to also review, so I think it's a much bigger sort of conversation than just these right here, right now. We are not going to change the dial by how many, how many of our like streetlights are on Oakland and Capitol. That's, that's not going to effectively do anything. The energy cost savings we can get by doing this now is going to be a lot more effective for sustainability and energy, uh, energy than, than just merely capping a couple of lights on the intersection that are bright, that are putting light up in the air. So I think it's a much, much bigger conversation and I, and I would love to have that conversation. I'd love to see it village wide. But right now, we're only talking about a, a couple of light fixtures and there's, there's not going to be any sort of beneficial impact to those couple of light fixtures. I mean, if we did this village wide, it would be way more impactful, but that's not the conversation now, and I feel like this is a much bigger conversation. We can have that down the line, but this, that's in front of us right now is way more, way more beneficial to get done sooner than later.
If I could, just to clarify, the only fixtures that have issues with dark sky compliance are those on Oakland and Capitol.
It's the whole length of the streets.
Correct.
It's not just a few lights to the intersection.
Right. But, but just to, to, to clarify what trustee Ursink stated. The, the replacement of the residential street lighting has no impact on, those are already dark sky compliant. The only ones in the village that are not are Oakland and Capitol.
Right. And what we're talking about here is switching out, making a change to the, converting the lamp of the fixture to LED for cost savings, energy savings.
Yes.
Any change to the fixture in terms of a shade would be a separate action, you know, project if you will. I understand the part about like if you're going to go up there, only go up once. But I guess to just checking in with where the board is, it sounds like trustee Stokbrand is not able to make a decision tonight because that question cannot be answered. Is there anyone else that feels like they need to defer? My concern about deferring is just that I would like to get it done this season. You know, and it seems like two distinct actions that we could take. But I'd like to hear from the other members of the board.
One quick question, how long can it take to get a bid on shields? We meet in two weeks.
Well, we wouldn't be getting a bid. We would be determined, we would be determining whether that's feasible with the fixtures we have. It depends on the responsiveness of the supplier. It shouldn't take more than a couple of days, but you know, we wait months for quotes sometimes. We would certainly do our best to have that information back to you at the first meeting of July.
I, I had the same question as, as trustee Stokbrand, so thank you for bringing that up. I was curious about that. I'm okay with approving the change to the fixtures, you know, and, and getting this part done. But I, I am also interested in, in seeing if we can add the dark side compliance to that. And then I did have a second question, do we know like what color the LED bulbs will be? Will it be, you know what I mean, in, in terms of you can have the bright white or the more warm colors?
The replacement bulbs that we have been using, and we've already replaced several of them on Oakland and Capitol. If you really look, you, you will see the difference. We've been we've been going toward a warmer
Okay.
light, a more yellow than like the pure white that you see on Wilson. We've not we've not been using those in our replacements.
I, that would be my ask, is to move towards a warmer tone, yeah, so thank you.
Trustee Baldoff?
I, I share the same view as trustee Lynn on this.
Well, I would take a motion at this time.
I move to designate ARPA funding in the amount of fifteen thousand for LED light fixtures on Oakland and Capitol. And then should I add in the motion, just requesting, you know, clarification from DPW on the discussed fielding and, and light bulbs, or do I not need to add that to the motion? Is that clear just from our discussion?
I think it's
I'm sorry, okay.
Our discussion.
Okay. So I'll just reread the motion just as is. I move to designate ARPA funding in the amount of 15,000 for LED light fixtures on Oakland slash Capitol.
And, and instead of fixtures, because I clearly am not down with my electric, my light fixture lingo, but I'll say relamping.
LED relamping, okay. I, I'll just read it again. I move to designate ARPA funding in the amount of 15,000 for LED relamping of the light fixtures on Oakland and Capitol.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion?
So then, will we have any indication? This is going to move forward without any discussion of correct?
Right, and then we would, we've requested the information to see whether it's feasible to do some type of dark sky accommodation and what that would cost, or, you know, just the, the basics, and if there's ARPA funding to be dedicated to that.
And because it would be time sensitive, obviously, we don't want to have the crews going up there more than once. Do we know when we'd get, I mean, obviously, it depends upon the vendors, but there's an understanding it is time sensitive, and we don't want the crews going up twice. So there's an understanding this would come before the July meeting? If possible.
That was going to be
If possible.
As I mentioned, we'll get you the information when we get it from the vendors. I, I can't, can't provide information I don't have.
Right, I said if possible.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that's all, all of our understanding. That's the direction that we offered.
If it's available July 3rd, it will be on your agenda.
Exactly. Yep. Thank you. All right, so can we take a vote, please? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Director Bushlick. Moving on to reports of village officials, we already read the Juneteenth proclamation. I marched in the Juneteenth parade with Mayor Kennedy, Mayor Mon, I mean, President Montgomery and trustee, another trustee from Brown D.R. I can't remember her name at the moment today, and that was a really positive experience, and I look forward to doing it next year with more of us. And the dedication of the bench for Trustee Maher was a really nice occasion. Thank you, Trustee Stokebrand, for joining. We were joined with former elected officials. Mike's wife, his sister and brother-in-law came up from Illinois, a lot of longtime friends. And we adjourned to the Beer Garden, so much good stories were had by all. Other reports of village trustees?
I just have a very quick one. Since it's summer, the Shorewood rec programs for the little kids have kicked off, and it's just seems to be off with a resounding success. Again, as usual, I'm just very, always very grateful to live in this community where we have so many programs for the kids in the village. You know, my kids are doing just about everything, and, you know, I see Justin everywhere, and I'm just so grateful that we really, that the village and the community, and all the volunteers, and all the, the, you know, students at Shorewood High, who are the staff, and, and all that kind of stuff. Everybody who, who helps make this, make these programs work, just a big thank you to all of them, because it really makes sure we're a wonderful place.
Yeah. I also attended the farmer's market yesterday. That was a really big kickoff for the season. Other reports?
Stealing my thunder, Ann. Got my hand up here. Thank you, thanks. Yeah, funner, farmer's market kicked off yesterday, a really fantastic turnout. You know, we have more vendors than, than ever. We, a lot of, a lot of faces, a lot of, you know, just a lot of happy people coming out to the farmer's market, so that was very exciting. I, I just, I'd love to second kind of what Justin's, or what, what Jerry said about Justin and the rec department. I mean, that is just such a fantastic opportunity for our kids here in the community. And just love seeing the groups of kids traveling around on their bikes to baseball and to different events. Just, just so cool. And then also, from, this is kind of my first time, you know, one of my first times doing a whole meeting virtually, and I have to say, like, the audio, everything sounded great. Like, I, I felt like, you know, there's been times where, where the, you know, people that have been on the other side of this haven't had a great experience, but I, I think it sounded really fantastic, so you know, kudos, kudos to getting that dialed in, but but yay, summer, and great job with the Juneteenth proclamation. I apologize, I wasn't able to make it. We had a lot of, a lot of baseball activities going on this, you know, this week, and then we left town this morning for, for Los Angeles, so. Anyhow, thank you, guys.
All right, well, safe travels. Trustee Stokebrand?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Bonnie Pedraza, who ended her, I believe it was five years on the Parks and Public Spaces Committee. Her last meeting was in May. And she was a very dedicated volunteer who worked very hard with the, the effort to get dogway stations throughout the village. Thank you to her.
Yeah.
Happy retirement.
Yeah, she did an amazing job. Uh, one last note, I was envious of Mayor Kennedy's and Alderwoman Vukovitz's nameplates that they had with their title and their municipality, and so I've requested that village manager order them for us so that we can wear them at occasions, so. It's not, it's a nominal fee. So, I'm coming to a you know, chest near you. Anyway, all right. Village manager. Oh, and Attorney Bear was at the Juneteenth parade driving the fire truck for Wisconsin Voices. So, his antique fire truck. It was, uh, yeah, that was really awesome. All right, future items of consideration, 11A, consider change to regulations for bicycle operators and transport of passengers be reviewed by the Public Safety Committee. Trustee Stokebrand?
Uh, yes, I would like to make a motion that the Public Safety Committee consider changes to regulations for bicycle operators and transport of passengers. Uh, this would allow parents who have like a cargo bike, or it's specifically for, you know, children to ride on the bicycle with their parents safely. Currently, our code does not allow that. And so basically, we'd be, if my understanding is correct, we'd be removing the village code right now that says you can't ride two people on a bicycle, another, an operator and another person, and we would just defer to state law, which allows bicycles that are built for more than one person. The end of it.
Does that need a second?
It does need a second.
Then I second that.
I'm thinking that it, it hearkens back to a day where people would ride on the handlebars of the bike. Remember that?
Oh, I remember. Yeah, I was like, how many kids could you fit on? Right.
But anyway, yes. So, uh, thank you, we have a motion and a second. Trustee Ursink, did you have something to say?
No, sorry. Still dealing with my, the lowering and raising of the hand, so apologize.
I know, it's hard. I had the same problem.
Success.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I have another item.
Yes.
Um, I would like to make a motion to consider options to improve pedestrian safety on Capitol Drive before the 2023-24 school year begins. There were a lot of very people who felt very strongly about this at the last Parks and Public Spaces Committee meeting, looking for any and all options that could be explored, implementation and costs for the, mostly the intersections west of Oakland and Capitol.
Okay.
And because time is of the essence. I do think they'll be coming forward with something before then. I know they're meeting in small groups of senior advise, senior services advisory board is also working on this. People are looking for specific things that they can bring to us for consideration.
I'm, I'm certainly open to hearing.
Waiting for 2024 just wasn't adequate for them. I think that's what came through in the last, you know, the last meeting, we had that discussion about the 2024 plan. There's a group of people that feel very strongly that something should, we should explore every option we can to get something better in place before the school. So that's my
I'm, I'm certainly open to exploring that in any way that we can. I, when, several years ago, when I was on the Ped Bike Safety Committee, and we got a small grant for safe routes to school, the, one of the things that the, you know, engineer who came in from Washington to look at everything in the village with us was that strip in front of the high school is just, it's the most dangerous strip for pedestrians. And even though there's painted crosswalks and pedestrians technically have the right of way, it's just, it's just a really difficult area.
Poor lanes.
It, it's an incredible amount of traffic, right? And, and just so much unrestricted flow of traffic. And, you know, there was nothing we could do at the time about it, at least from the perspective of this little grant that we had, but it was I, it's just something I, I definitely would like to, to work on and look at in any way that we can. Is it something that, you know, we could ask Ped Bike Safety to add to their agenda for the next meeting? If they could throw some things at us, or should we do a different?
My understanding was that the subcommittee is working right now on ideas.
Okay.
And so if we can put it on the July 3rd agenda, they would have something, something would be ready with some costs ideas and
Just for clarification, is this going to the Public Works Committee before going to the board? That was just a point of clarification.
I'd be fine with that from the Public Works Committee standpoint.
I just don't know if we have time.
I know, I'm really, I understand the, the wanting it before school starts. I'm just I I guess I can't imagine how to circumvent a process that allows us to review the information. So that's the, I mean, I think that trying to have it done is completely noble, and I, I won't, you know, stand in the way of, of that goal. But I also want to go through our usual process.
So should we ask?
Could we have the committee meet at 6:30 and the board could take it up, board meeting? Same night?
I'm feeling really pressured in terms of, I don't, I don't even know.
I'm getting a lot of pressure at the committee.
I understand that. So I guess I don't even know what we would be vetting at the
I mean, it would be nice for the Public Works to see ideas and documents, and, and then we can decide to move forward. I don't think it has, has to happen that, that night. If it does, then it does, but, but it would be nice to see something laid out. If there, if though, if that, if that is in the process right now, and they're finalizing ideas, and, and, and they have a set group of, of, of thoughts and ideas to present to us, that'd be fantastic. I think it'd be great for the Public Works to look at it, and then, you know, I mean, there, there's a lot of projects going on in the community right now. And whether these are big projects or small projects, I mean, we're going to have to figure that out, right? I mean, we're not going to, if it's a big sort of infrastructure change, if somebody wants to build a pedestrian bridge across Capitol, that's not something we're going to be able to do before, uh, before school starts. But if it's some paint, if it's some temporary plastic shielding somewhere, maybe that's something we can do, but I, I just don't see how some, something bigger, drastic, that should be done in that.
It's not infrastructure. It would not be infrastructure.
Well, then what, what, what exactly, what are we talking about then?
Well, one of the things they talked about was painting intersections. They talked about possibly painting over, some of the intersections have, I think it's New Hall, both the east and west side of the intersection have the ladder, and it can be distracting the drivers to have so many sets of ladders, but we're, so the recommendations have been to cover up one to try to funnel everybody either to the west side or the east side of that intersection, instead of having like the driver see, oh, it's another, another crossing, what do I care? I think another option that they talked about was the rapid flashing beacons. This is the most that we got into infrastructure. It seems to me they're only in the middle, I'm, I'm going to get this wrong, they're either in the middle or only on the sides, and you can have them in all three places. So when someone, and are they button activated? When someone pushes a button, you don't just see one little one in the middle of the intersection. You see them on both sides. You can have three instead of just one. And they also did talk about possibly putting in the, the bollard. Let's see, where do they have one? On Wilson Drive, I think. The bollard in the middle of the street, state law, has the pedestrian, you must stop for pedestrians, a little stop sign, it's green. It's bolted into the asphalt. Things like that.
So, yeah, I would say, I will vouch for you that you did your job. You took the pressure and you brought it here, and you advocated really well. I think we can, can we have, I mean, we can have Public Works meet next, on the third, right? Or do we have other? Or you want to take it and?
We'll just have to rearrange, you know, we're going to do the LRP that night.
Oh, right. So I guess what I, what I'm feeling, I hear the urgency, and I, and I agree with it, and I'm, I'm more than happy to sort of make room for this. I guess I don't want to, I want to work with staff around what that looks like. And be really clear that we're getting all the information that we need to be efficient with it. And I just don't have that information yet. So I will support a motion to bring something, to work with staff to yes?
I would just, so, staff will need to review whatever is proposed prior to being placed in the packet, if you're looking for them to provide comment. Just to, because, I mean
From a process.
Right, because that would be something that Planning and Development would review, Public Works would review. Do you know when we're anticipating this to be received?
I'll ask Gary.
Okay.
And then what about our traffic study that, you know, I remember when I first came on the board, we got our traffic study, there was a lot of recommendations in there. Does any of this fall within that study that we have? I know it called for a lot of different things in that area.
Right, right.
So we, we should be referring to that, because we spent, we made quite a significant investment into that particular study, so I, you know, I would love to just, if we're going to revisit something, we should work off of the plan that we've already invested in, and, and sort of revisit those, the steps that were recommended.
I would think if there's any low hanging fruit in that.
So, yeah, and point taken. I mean, I also think that it would be, if there's a group working on it, staff could connect with that group and sort of cut out, you know, have the direct communication, gather the information, and then we can discuss what type of agenda item makes sense. And we can
That'd be, that's, yeah, that'd be a great way to streamline this conversation, because we don't want it to go one place, and then to have staff say something, then it go back, and then it come back. So let's, let's try to connect staff, let's try to look at the plan that we already have in place, and, and, and this public safety, the group, and, and then come back with some, some real sort of initiatives that we can do potentially before the start of the school year.
I think it would just be I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, the start of the school year is one thing, it's a long school year, right? So we have, there are plenty of opportunities, you know, it doesn't, you know, I think it's a great symbolic gesture to get it done before the September 4th, or whatever that may be, but it's, it's a long school year, so let's just be mindful of that, and be mindful of staff's sort of time and energy, and, and what they have the capacity for right now as well. But all for it. I live on Morrison Capital, that is the most like dangerous intersection for, for kids, like I, you know, I, you know, something needs to be done there, and it's not an easy fix. I mean, there's people that just don't care. They'll run over a sign, they'll run over a kid, it ju, it just doesn't matter at that intersection, so you know, I, I'm very much in favor of trying to figure out how to solve that, that issue.
I do have one question about this. I fully support doing whatever we can as soon as we can. So I appreciate Trustee Stokebrand bringing this to the board. And, like, are we able to have, like, a school zone speed limit?
I think we are, I think we already do.
Do we? But like, is it like, you know, is it flashing? Is it like?
I think it does.
Isn't it? Okay.
It's
We can do a review. That would be the purpose that, right, staff, you know, we have all of that documentation, and so if we can just get it all together, then we won't be rebounding off things.
Right. It would suggest that it would be most helpful for Public Works and for Planning and Development just to have the written proposal.
Yeah.
Um, so that they can take a look at it. If you If you, we ask people to submit that all the time, same documentation that we'd be submitted with a traffic, you know, control request. So have that submitted and then we would conduct the review.
Yeah, so that would be the concrete.
Assistant Manager Chris Anderson would be happy to provide that as soon as they come up with it.
Well, and I believe, I know that Don Blackmore spoke and she has submitted a request that.
Yep.
You know, so if they could just go through, if there are more ideas that have come since that one, to go through that, that is the most direct route to take. And then we have everybody that needs to be talking is talking. And we can route that through and staff can get the information together. So.
I'd be happy to send you the link, Trustee Stokebrand.
The link to?
The traffic control request form. We have a process that was approved through the transportation and parking analysis for the evaluation.
I'm sure it's online.
It is, I was just trying to be helpful.
No, I think Chris Anderson here is the critical piece because he's the staff liaison and he is very familiar with all of this, so I'm sure he can put together for staff, whatever staff needs to.
Or he can connect with the residents who spoke, who have ideas and so that he's clear.
Right. What's your ideal deadline for the January, from July 3rd? What's your ideal deadline for? And that's a critical piece that Chris will have to communicate to the committee members and the interested community members is what's, what's the deadline?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
And that's allowing 24 hours for staff to review. So I would need to get their agreement that they're here and present can do that review.
Pardon me?
I would need to get their agreement that they're here and present to do the review.
Your staff?
Yes.
End of business on Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes, Attorney Bear?
Just wanted to point out that when you start to get to 20 minutes on an item for future consideration, you're veering very close to a substantive discussion of something that's not agendized. So is there a specific item that you want to consider at a future agenda and is there a motion to do that? And then do you want to take a vote on it? That's all I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I think we were trying to unpack some interests and needs and, and direct them the right way as to whether we're ready for an agenda item or whether we have some process that needs to occur and then it can come to, and I'm, so I'm open to a motion for a specific agenda item. I will work with staff to see if that's possible, but I'm not gonna skip any process. That's, that's, I guess where I'm, I'm.
I think I made a motion, was there a second or not?
Can you repeat what it was exactly? And, cause I'm, do we need an actual motion or is it an agreement that this is coming through that, through that channel? Because I'm okay with it either way.
That's the process.
Yeah. I don't think we need a motion. I think we're just in agreement that it's coming through the channel and we're gonna see it and, and then we're gonna make those decisions. We don't, we don't need an official motion, I don't think.
I just don't know what the schedules are of other staff when they get that. Right now, I just, I can't, I don't know.
What's up?
So the motion that I heard was, was not using the process that we have to gather information around traffic-related proposals. And so we kind of, our discussion kind of unpacked that and discerned what we have a process for and we directed it there. So you can still make a motion in some regard if you feel that you need to, Trustee Stokebrand, but otherwise the process is going to take place and it is gonna come back to us. And everybody's on board that we understand the urgency and the desire here.
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay with it either way. I just, I do want to see something as quickly as possible and I think having it go to Public Works Committee as soon as possible would be great because, you know, at a minimum it's another.
Yeah, so they, on July 3rd, we have the committee, the whole scheduled for the long-range financial plan. So if Public Works meets, it would most likely be before that.
Okay.
So like 5:30 or.
Okay.
Either way, we're looking at extra meetings, you know.
Yeah.
Might be on the same night, but it's.
I mean, is there any consideration that's kind of like a holiday sort of weekend and that Monday maybe, I don't know. You know, I know, I know there's urgency to this matter and the holidays aren't, you know, something that we need to really, you know, take, take in consideration, but I mean, is, is that adding another hour onto what's gonna be a, a later meeting? Is that, is that appropriate? Or do we want to save it for the following meeting where we can actually dig in?
If you saved it for the following meeting, that would be August 7th. Because we only meet once.
Okay, that's too long. Yep, that's right, that's, that's too long. Let's, let's just pile it in on the 3rd.
Do a special meeting of the Public Works Committee?
I'm absolutely okay with that.
I would be, I, I mean, I would be fine with doing that, you know, two weeks later in July.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
And that'll give staff a little bit more time to get everything together, but still keep us on track to be able to get something done hopefully by the start of the school year.
But just to be clear then, that would not happen until after July 3rd, so that doesn't help us, right?
Well, I think, why, why would it not help us? I think that would help us. Am I missing?
Well, you would want to have action on July 3rd potentially so you could have something in place, knowing how busy staff is at Public Works. To give them plenty of time because I think the burden could fall on that department most heavily. That's my concern.
Yeah, I don't know what action we could take on July 3rd.
I'm just saying, we were talking about having a special Public Works Committee meeting.
Public Works would be a recommendation. So.
And so with that, you try to get that to happen before July 3rd so that we could act potentially on the 3rd and Public Works then would have six weeks, seven weeks to get something done?
I'm not at liberty to.
I'd be, I'd be okay with asking for a, a special Public Works meeting on the 17th. I think that would.
I don't.
Be enough time.
So Leanne is the liaison to Public Works and I'm not trying to not be committal here, but I, I can't speak for her. So, you know, I would need to check with them.
Okay.
Those are the two departments who are most heavily involved in these reviews and whose input we need. So I.
Okay, then I just, I'll just boil down my last thoughts. I'm sorry for, for dragging this out. My, I would just say that, you know, what I'd like is if, if there's any information, you know, we can get as quickly as possible, that'd be great. And then I'd just like to ask Leanne if we could have a special Public Works meeting on the 17th. That's, that, that's my ask as.
Yeah, it'd be hard for me to kind of move forward without Leanne, you know, without comments from Leanne, but I, I can back Jerry on, on his thoughts.
17th of July.
That's.
Yes.
I'm gonna rewrite that to Monday.
Okay, just wanted, do we need to go turn back time?
I know, I can see.
Do we need a motion?
Long-range financial plan.
Do we need a motion or is it direction? Okay.
Direction is fine. And then the committee will follow the, the regular process of submitting the request.
Okay. Great, I think that that concludes that item. And.
I had one more.
Yes.
Oh, I just wondering, when I saw the thing about the memorandum of understanding about the crossing guards during budget talks last year, we briefly discussed asking St. Roberts to help with the cost of a crossing guard. And I'm just wondering if we've done that at the staff level?
I would have to ask Chief Worth, I know that they were in contact about wanting additional hours and were noted to, I believe, it related that they would need to contribute.
And I would say that that is, since that is a future agenda item that's already scheduled and we are not agended to talk about that tonight, unless you're needing to make a different.
No, as long as the effort has been made to.
I'm happy to have her report on that on the 7th.
Okay.
When she comes with the MOU.
I did note that the, in the memo, there was reference to a meeting with St. Roberts, but there were no details about that. Okay, any other items for future consideration? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, we are adjourned at 8:51. Thank you, everyone.
Is it the whole, the whole meeting, right?
I don't.
No, but I was just like, wait a second, it's like, you know, hold on, you live by the airport, you just get used to.
Yeah.
Right.